Since you didn't have a vaccine.
Why don't you click on Bill Lyon?
Well, she accidentally promoted me. Just think. Hi Brooke, if it's easier, I can, you want me to un-promote you? I didn't know if that was you or Bill. So I just promoted you, but I can, um. I can, uh, I don't know if y'all are having issues at home, but I can send you back to just an attendee, I think.
If that will help. Oh, this thing says I'm on it now.
Yeah, we can hear you.
Can you hear me?
We can.
I don't understand why Deb's picture is up there and yours isn't.
Francis is up here too.
Let's just do it this way then, okay? I can't get my microphone going on my iPad, it's just like. Who's there? Bill, are you there? Bill?
Do you want me to log off so I'm not on there?
I don't know, I mean.
Do you have your camera on?
Brooke, yeah, sure, my camera's on. Of course it is. I'm not a participant. You are.
Maybe down on.
Everybody else is in. And you.
You're in there too.
Yeah, we have both of you guys.
Showing up here.
As a panelist.
Yeah, I'm on my iPad, but I can't get the microphone to work, so I'm here on my phone right now.
That works, we can hear you.
Okay, well, good. Let's roll.
Okay. I don't see. I mean, I see something that says ask to start video, but. It might, is it's. I know, does he have his video on like normal, I guess he does.
The host is us, okay, click start my video, okay. He's on his computer and he used my laptop the last time, so that's why, there he is. Do you see him now?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, thanks so much for your help.
Sorry about all that.
Oh, no worries, thank you.
I can't hear anybody.
Oh, and, um.
Have you got your volume turned up?
Yeah, I have my volume turned up, I just, it says the microphone just won't work, so. And, oh, by the way, I'm gonna have a motion at some point in this meeting.
Um, I wanted to let you know, Bill, that Zinni is in here with me.
Oh, hi, Zinni. Hi, Kristen.
Hey. I have my video off, but, um. So he's at town hall with me.
Right.
Hi, Zinni. I should have come there, I should have just come there too, but whatever.
Yeah, you can, um. Can always come here and we can get it all set up if you're having issues with.
I'd rather just do that, and I'd put.
Yeah. I'm usually always here, just because it's easier for me.
Hey, Kristen.
Loud children. Yes.
Yeah, it's Mark, not Mike.
Okay, I was just saying, I thought.
Yeah, I just got, I just got audio tonight, not video, so.
Oh, okay, that's fine, thank you.
You bet.
Is, um. Oh, never mind, okay.
Keep doing it.
So what time is it? Should we go ahead and start?
It's 6:37.
Okay, thanks.
I think we sort of, I think we've sort of been this situation before, we said we're just gonna start.
Yeah, okay. I'd like to call the order, this. March 11th, 2021 meeting of Town of James Island Planning Commission to order. This meeting is in compliance, has been noticed in compliance with the South Carolina Freedom of Information Act. My name's Bill Lyon, Chairman. Present is Ed Steers, Vice Chairman. Zinni Quinn. Mark Mayer. And Deborah Bidwell, Commissioners. Francis Simmons, our Planning, Secretary of Planning Commission and Town Clerk. Kristen Crane, Planning Director. And Flannery Wood, Planning, too. And I'd like to welcome Mark to our Planning Commission. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes for the December 10th, 2020 meeting?
I make a motion, we approve them. This is it, this is it.
I'll second that, this is Bill. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed? Okay, that carries. At this time. We would like to encourage anyone who'd like to submit any comments, suggestions, or questions regarding the comprehensive plan review. Or any other public comment to speak during this public comment portion of the meeting. Is there anyone present on the Zoom platform that would like to speak? If so, use the chat function to state your name and raise your hand, and we will call on you. One by one. When you are called on, please state your name, address, for the record, and limit your comments to two minutes.
Um. I don't see any comments in the chat function for public comment.
Okay. Tonight, Planning, the Planning Commission will go over the edits to the Town Council. Recommended at the January 21st meeting. What Planning Commission votes on tonight will go back to Town Council for first reading at their March 18th meeting. Second reading at the public hearing will be held in April. I guess I'll hand it over to you, Kristen.
Okay. I will go ahead and put up. Edits on the screen. Um. I'll just actually, if it's all right, go through what council suggested and then. Go from there.
Okay.
When we sent this to Town Council, we took out all the colors. And added it all as one single highlight color to make it a little easier to read. And we cleaned up some of the formatting issues. And so, when you pack it, it's all the yellow is all of the edits put together, there's no distinction between. What council did and what you guys have done this past year. But I can just, I can, I'm gonna go through the minutes from the council meeting, so you can. Kind of hear what they, what they said. The first suggested edit from council was. Taking out. The word services from the term ecosystem services. And so, that was listed in a couple places. I know it was on. The land use element goal. Right here. And so, we struck that out. And, um. I think it was listed in a few other places too, I don't have all of them listed, but. That's, that's where one of the edits is, and then. There was some question on the definition of the word mutualistic. And so, it was suggested to. Change the language to read. I think it was right here, encourage redevelopment. To improve current aesthetics and diversity of amenities in the town's commercial areas. And so. We actually, the original word was positive, and then Planning Commission changed it to mutualistic. And so, council thought to strike both of those words. And then mutualistic was on. Another. Page. Right here in the land use element background. An inventory, right here. Um. So. Everywhere mutualistic was used, the vote there was to strike that as well. Right here. You can see. And then. Ecosystem Services. Was in another area, I'm just going through the minutes, I'm sorry. Let's see. Right here is another area where mutualistic was stricken. And then, ecosystem services. They wanted to just add ecosystems and strike the word services there. And when you get down to. Natural resource, yep, you have a question?
No, it seems like we're splitting hairs, and, you know, we changed, we consistently took out a number of things and changed them. It seems like they're splitting hairs, but. Anyhow, let's keep going.
I do want to talk about ecosystem services when you're ready to.
Okay, I thought may I just go through all of them and then y'all.
Absolutely.
Because I, I'll forget where I was. I think, let's see, natural resources, yes, um. It's. That page number is wrong. Um. There was some talk. When we get to vegetation here. About, um. Having language in here that was not specific to James Island, and it was more generic for the county. So, we struck that sentence, that last sentence that just talks about county-wide vegetation. Um. And it was requested by council that I. That we add in some more information specific to James Island with vegetation in mind, and. I have a couple requests out to. People that would know that more than I do, and I'm just waiting to hear back, so. I guess what we can do, if I don't hear back, is just. We struck that part and just leave it at that, because I'm not, I don't feel. Qualified enough to speak on the specific vegetation of James Island more than it's, than it's already here. So, anyways, that's just a request I have in, and that was a request from council, but we're working on that part. Um. So, we also added in this paragraph right here about the trees council that was formed. Recently.
What page, what, what page are you on now, Kristen?
16.
Okay. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. So the last sentence is just, um. A summary of what the town has done to support Arbor Day. And, um, the new tree survey that we have. With some interns from Colton, Charleston. Cataloging the tree canopy using GeoThink. And so, that was added in. Um. And then, I believe the last. Amendment was in. Community facilities. Sorry. A goal. Council suggested a new goal. For community facilities. For youth. Recreation. Number nine. Explore opportunities to create and maintain more active recreational. Facilities and programs for the youth of James Island. And with that, that is. That is all the edits that council had. And whatever you guys discuss and vote on tonight, like. Chairman Lyon said, we'll go to them for first reading. Just kind of like it'll start over next week. And then they'll do a public hearing and second reading on that in April.
So we want to open it up for discussion?
Sure. Sure.
Deb, did you?
Yeah, I'd love to. Um, so I think maybe people didn't quite understand what ecosystem services are. And that's totally okay. But the way it's phrased now in a couple of places where it talks about preserving the suburban character. And ecosystems makes it sound like we're trying to preserve suburban ecosystems. And that's not at all what my intention was. With the phrasing of it, so. The adjective suburban should not modify the noun ecosystems. Maybe we could add natural ecosystems and then we could let the services part go. Ecosystem services are just what nature gives us for free, like the marsh gives us blue crabs and um, fishes. And it filters our water, the trees clean our air. You know, it's. And the marsh absorbs floodwaters. So, ecosystem services are what healthy ecosystems do for the benefit of all the living creatures there, including humans. It's fine to scratch it, but I'm not interested in maintaining suburban ecosystems. I'm interested in maintaining the nature. And I'd like the, the um. Healthy natural ecosystems are what keep us from flooding and keep us fed. So maybe we could just say and natural ecosystems of the area?
Yeah, I. Think that'd be okay, Kristen?
Sorry, um. Yes, I would just want to make sure. That we hit it. In all the areas that the word was stricken and just make sure it makes sense. I don't know. I mean, I know the goal, the land use element goal is repeated, so that that'll be twice, but um.
I don't know if it needs to be changed in like every place that the system, the services has been taken out. But definitely anywhere it's talking about suburban.
Okay. Consideration to maintaining the suburban character and natural ecosystems of the area.
Yeah, that'd be awesome.
Okay.
I think I, I'm, I'm with you. That's great.
Anything else, Deb?
It's fine that they didn't like mutualistic, whatever. I think one of the. The way we were talking about redevelopment and they ended up scratching both words, so. It doesn't qualify what kind of redevelopment. I don't know if anybody. Has any issues about that or wants to put back that positive. Um, maybe they just decided that it was really hard to define those terms and it would be better to just say redevelopment.
Um, I was just gonna see if in the note, in the minutes, there was any discussion about that and I could read it to you guys.
It's, it's really okay. I just, I was asking if everybody else has a. Yeah, because I know we did talk about that.
Just one more thing while we're on this page. So, in this, what do you think about this? Sentence where it says the natural resources element goal with the word services?
On James Island, we encourage orderly and environmentally sound development of the land. A special consideration to maintaining the suburban character and ecosystems of the area. Yep, natural should go in there.
Yeah, no, number three.
Oh, number three, I'm sorry. Um, protect, preserve and enhance the natural environment by promoting biodiversity and preserving and improving ecosystems. That's fine.
Okay.
I just have a question on the goals page is what uh, on number six. What is? I know what resilient means, but what, how, in that context, what does resilient imply? I, I. We consistently talk about high quality, affordable housing for people of all ages, incomes and physical abilities a lot. Uh, but what is resilient? Why is that there?
Let's see, which.
Yes, it, on page four, number six.
That, that hasn't changed from, that was one of the first. One of the first edits, but I believe it's, it's. A word that's placed there to me that will last.
Okay.
Last through different. Outcomes, I guess.
Yeah, but it, don't we, I mean, for me, it's really redundant when you go encourage high quality. Affordable housing for people of all ages. It's on page thirty two as well, so it doesn't add anything to the definition. But it, but it could add confusion to it. We're not the only ones reading this document.
I, I was confused. Um, if it's high quality, it, it's gonna be sustainable and it is, it should, that's why it's high quality.
Correct. I don't think it adds anything to the word or the sentence.
Yeah, I had page fifty thirty two, uh, mark two.
Correct.
So.
Yeah, it might be redundant. I think, um, maybe we were thinking about it in terms of um. Yeah, high quality should be resilient to flooding and storms, so. Agree.
So, on the uh, I just Googled the definition really quickly. It's able to withstand or recover quickly from difficult conditions.
See how it adds anything to that sentence.
Maybe when we put it in there or they put it in there, or um, maybe we were thinking in terms of like high quality might be building materials. And and resiliency might be functionality.
Yeah, let's, let's not.
Yeah.
But I mean, we can scrap it and. I don't care.
I was, I was just curious what, what it was. I, I, that, that whole goal there is, it's so hard to combine. High quality, affordable housing is really. You know, a difficult goal, but uh, anyhow. I don't, you know, we've, we can just leave it if it's. You know, I don't, I don't know. I, I don't care. I was just curious. So what, what it was in there for. But. Both of us were quest, two of us were questioning about it, so I don't know.
Yeah, maybe it should go if it's confusing.
Yeah, yeah.
Do you want me to strike it or?
We, we added it initially, right, Kristen?
You did, um, and I don't actually remember. The background behind it. When that was or. But yeah, that was an edit from. It wasn't a council edit.
Then I don't guess they would have a problem with us deleting that.
Well, let's do it. Let's do it.
People, let's do it.
And we could say it was David's fault. He put it in.
Anything else? Ed, did you have something?
No, no, I, you know, I just have the feeling that if. It's been rewritten and approved by them. You know, I, I, the things Deb said, I, I had questions about too. But I don't know that there's much else that I could, could see. There's a lot of good, good, good thoughts and ideas in there.
All right, do we want to uh, vote to approve it? Is there a motion to approve the uh? Comprehensive plan as it is?
I can do it. My clock is making noise. It's just a bird clock. That's why I was meeting myself. I move to approve it.
I second. This is Ed.
All those, all those in favor? Opposed? It's unanimous. So, the uh, next order of business is uh, electing. Planning Commissioner Chair and Vice Chair. Local Planning Commission must elect one of its members as. Chairman and one as Vice Chairman for one year term. These appointments will begin immediately and last through twenty twenty one. Do we have any nominations for Chair?
I nominate Bill Lyon.
Is there a second?
I second that, Zinni.
Any other nominations? All right, then, all in favor, say aye. All of those opposed? Do we have uh, any nominations for Vice Chair? I nominate Ed Steers. Do we have a second?
I second that, Zinni.
Thanks, Zinni. Uh, all in favor, or is there anybody else that would like to make a nomination? Now, uh, then all in favor, say aye.
Why?
All those opposed? Then that's unanimous. I would like to uh, welcome Mark Mayer to the Planning Commission. It's kind of uh, tough doing it through Zoom and not getting to see your face and get to shake your hand, but uh. Hopefully, all this will be over soon and uh, we can get back to our regular meetings. Do any other commissioners have comments?
I'd just like to get to the, to the place where we're doing it face to face. Uh, as soon as it's safe for everyone. Uh, the collegiality and all is just so much better when you can uh, can be together, but I know everybody probably wants that. But uh, I look forward to that, that happening. That, that's my comment.
I would like that too, Ian.
Me too. And very nice to meet you, Mark.
Well, thank you. Appreciate it.
Yeah, nice to meet you, Mark. And, and Deborah, you know, I've never really seen either of you.
It'll be nice when we can do that.
Yeah, I just look forward to that. Maybe I have, maybe I have seen you. I don't know.
Francis is gonna have a hard time figuring out who he said what during this portion of the meeting, but uh. All right, our next meeting will be April eighth, twenty twenty one. If there are any other, if there are no other business to come before the Planning Commission. Uh, call this meeting adjourned.
Great. Everybody be safe. We'll see you in a month, or talk to you in a few months.
Sounds good. Take care, everybody.